Mr. Koma.
Here.
Ms. May.
Here.
Mr. Beatty.
Here.
Mr. Hicks.
Here.
Mr. McCoy.
Here.
Mr. Graves.
Here.
Mr. Manley.
Here.
I'd like to invite each and every player led by Greg Manley, education of retired Chief Derek Stewart, in his presence today, by the Washington College. Goodness.
Please join me in the pledge, attention, salute, players.
Let the nation stand in the name of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for another opportunity, Lord, to come before you in the decision-making process. Probably I'm afraid that you'll be in the midst of a debate. Everything goes well today, Lord, God, and pray that decisions on the, uh, will be made in the best interest of the children. Be with us in God's name, Lord, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, please. Oh, we need a motion to approve the minutes for our latest meeting on April ninth.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion second, on the paper, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposition? There is, uh, we need a motion to approve the agenda today.
I still hope that we approve the agenda today.
Have a motion, have a second, on the paper, yes?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposition? There is, uh, first I report, Mr. Gatz.
Thank you, Mr. Koma. Uh, as many of you know, we are well into the hiring season, busy season for our leadership for next school year. Uh, special mention today, now, the appointments of three new principals. I'm starting with Drew Elementary, it's Janaye Freeman. Stand up, Janaye. Hi, guys. Janaye actually took over Thursday, um, in February, when his pedro's retired, and now she is, uh, the principal, uh, at Drews. Congratulations, Janaye. Uh, next up is Malika Gray. Malika has been serving as interim principal at Riverbend all year, done a great job, so she will take over, uh, more remote interim time for us. Congratulations, Malika. And then our third appointment, uh, at Swarts Upper Elementary, replacing the retired Janaye Maxwell, is Miss Deanne Bean. So. Deanne has been serving as assistant principal for many years, and so congratulations to you. Uh, with those appointments, it's, it's really time to kick off. Uh, Mr. Thompson and his staff, uh, will begin the process, uh, a very, very busy summer for the next, uh, few weeks. So, I'm gonna announce, uh, today that he will be opening after this meeting several positions, uh, especially as supervisor, assistant principal at Ritual High School, two assistant principals at Westboro High School, assistant principal at Ritualville, assistant principal at Drews, assistant principal at Central, assistant principal at Swarts Upper, people are praised with coordinator and student support services, and then curriculum coordinators at Good Hope, Good Old, Washington Junior, and Riverbend Elementary. So, busy time coming up for the next month, so a lot of movement, so appreciate Mr. Thompson and his staff, so, um, that's the first step. Mr. Koma.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Manley, we have any comment cards today?
Uh, no, sir, but Mr. Koma, we have no comment on.
Thanks, sir. Gonna start off, I have no more special recognition, but I just had a little speech made.
Thank you, Mr. Koma. If, uh, Mr. Geis would like to come down and, and remember, if you want to join when we recognize new area, uh, area students or employees, feel free to do so. Um, we are gonna start this morning, we actually started about an hour ago celebrating these students, but, uh, we are glad to introduce them to our community, so please join me in recognizing and congratulating our Louisiana State softball champions, our 2024 Lady Panthers. They are joined by their manager, Avery Sykes, coaches Brian Chrisland, Nancy Chrisland, and Brian West. Congratulations.
Nice job.
We've got a picture we're gonna give to, uh, current guys, and this guy, anybody here, Jason Tom, I don't know how to do this. Thank you, guys. This is, this is, this is, this is. Tom, you can do that. Congratulations, buddy.
We'll let the traffic jam clear.
There you go.
Okay, equally as fantastic, we wanted to congratulate and recognize our Louisiana State baseball champions, our 2024 Rebels. Awesome looking great guys, they are joined today by their manager, Elijah Swann, coaches Wade Sutler, Brad Rancor, Saint Corbin, John Michael Pea, Ron McBeth, and Josh, Josh Ford. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Love you.
Oh, my bad, come on, man.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations, Koma. Congratulations.
All right, our celebration is not going to end there. Um, next, I would like to introduce you to a very special student. Please allow me to introduce Mr. Bryce Quark, he's a fourth grader at Bolling Elementary. Bryce is a hero, okay? One of our bus aides suffered a seizure on the back of the bus during a route, and Bryce took action checking on her to make sure she was okay and cared for her. As he relayed to the bus driver what was happening, he was calm, fully collected as any adult in a stressful situation, and for that, we commend him with an award of excellence. We were pleased this year to have two students who advanced to Louisiana Student of the Year state finalists. One of them couldn't make it today, bless her heart, she's on her senior trip, and we would not want to interfere with that or anything. Uh, but we do have, here's Liliana Rose from East Washington Middle, Liliana, if y'all come up. Liliana represented Washington Parish, she had her place, she developed a desert home with the highlights, and I could just learn, breaking news, Liliana scored a perfect score on her algebra class. Congratulations, Liliana. Earlier this year, October, in fact, we recognized two students who, uh, were named National Merit Scholars Semipartners. Uh, I'll call them up, John Wesley Floyd and Bradley Moore, if you guys want to come up, we're gonna talk about you all here. So, um, when recognizing the first time, they represented Washington Parish as the only two students from the district came to that prestigious list, made up of sixteen thousand semipartners across the nation. More than one point three million applied from approximately twenty-one thousand high schools. Both of these seniors scored a thirty-five in their ACT and maintained a four-point-oh GPA, and we're excited to recognize them today as National Merit Scholars, thank you.
Awesome.
Congratulations. Next, Mr. Geis and his directors were very excited to surprise our very own Kristen Hicks. Come on up, Kristen. Kristen has been recognized as a twenty-two-four Louisiana exemplary educator by the Department of Education. She is a Rhodesian degree in the program of knowledge, is honors and spotlight, exceptional teacher to exemplify Louisiana's education profession. Congratulations to her. She did not know she was nominated, it was truly a surprise. Uh, Ms. May, I need you to join me down, uh, the floor. Last but certainly, certainly not least, today, we are honoring a staunch supporter of the Washington Parish school ordinance, Violet Duncan. Ms. Duncan has diligently attended every board meeting for over forty years. She's had two children and many grandchildren, so we Washington Parish, so we can't thank her enough for her continued commitment to our home. And that was a super great recognition, and we are, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. May. Moving on to item number two, discussion, discussion, both of us have ten, some of them, Mr. Mike Van, she, retired Chief Derek Stewart.
Hey, y'all, thank y'all for having me today, I appreciate y'all giving me a little bit of y'all time. Uh, still can see Summit June fifteenth, uh, twenty twenty-four is gonna be at the, uh, Civic Center, is for ages thirteen to nineteen. Uh, I've been working in the school system now almost six years, thank you, Mr. Geis, appreciate it. Uh, doing article TC, and I think being in the classroom, it taught me a lot, from what I see, what I, what I think. Young people need, uh, teenagers to listen more to other teenagers. So, when I came up with the, uh, idea of Team Summit, it's gonna give the young people a platform for the ones that are excelling, and the ones that are doing the right thing, to talk to other young people, and tell them what they did, what they did not do, uh, to get to the level that they're at. So, that's my purpose of Team Summit, I'm, I'm just looking for support and trying to get the work out, uh, June fifteenth, that's followed by the weekend. So, uh, give y'all, give y'all about three hours, that's all we need. I'm gonna bring them out to the Civic Center, and it, it will be, we will have some very good topics, uh, to discuss. Uh, if I have any questions, please, sorry. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Item number three, discussion of potential contracts, your action against Don Barren contract, the corporate leader to tell the office of strength, no scare, watch. Mr. Greg Manley, I screen her definitely.
Thank you, Mr. Koma, I appreciate the time. Uh, as you know, we're in the process of building a middle school, it's starting in the area, starting in the middle school, and I've asked Rice Gregory, uh, to come before the board today and give us some information, make a presentation as to where we're at, and what his recommendation is going forward, as far as the completion of that school. So, we're, we have been and continue to, uh, run behind on our completion date. The kids getting bugged behind every time we have a monthly meeting, so I've asked Rice to come before the board and kind of give board members a status update on where we're at, where we're going, and his recommendation moving forward on that particular project. So, Rice, appreciate you coming before the board today.
Y'all, uh, I believe, y'all have in y'all's folder, uh, a timeline schedule. If y'all would, uh, please go to it, and, uh, I'm gonna review it with you. There were so many dates, it was kind of important that y'all look at the dates, recognize the dates where they all merging together, uh, over a two, two and a half year period. Uh, the project is bid on January the thirteenth of twenty twenty-two. Uh, the contract was dated January the twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-two, with a notice to proceed of February the twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. We normally, uh, between the contract date and a notice to proceed, we normally give a contractor time to start mobilizing, decide, start ordering materials, to start the shop drawing process and everything, before we start his actual days of, of, of construction to accumulate. So, that's the reason there's a difference between the contract date and the notice to proceed, and in this case, we gave, uh, nearly a month, uh, in between the actual time starting, uh, on the notice to proceed. There, that made the original contract, which required completion, uh, was August the fourteenth of twenty twenty-three. Uh, during the term of the contract, the contract provides for five hundred and forty consecutive calendar days. Within the construction documents, we have provisions in there that the contractor, uh, can request, uh, uh, implement weather days, things like that, as long as they're backup. Uh, we also require them to, uh, include only the anticipated days work. So, if there's not a history of working on a Saturday or Sunday, they can't just claim a rain day or extension of time for Saturday, if they were gonna work anyway, and just cause it rain that day, that's not fair to y'all or fair to anybody. Um, so, we, the contractor has accumulated a total of fifty-one requested, uh, time extension days, and we ran in all fifty-one of them, they provided proper backup and so forth, and in the valuation, uh, we've had just one change order on the project, and we included that within the change order, that gave required completion time of October the fourth of twenty twenty-three. At the current time, the project, uh, as of today, is two hundred and twenty-three days, uh, incomplete. Uh, the contractor, at our last monthly meeting, we normally have monthly meetings, uh, every month, uh, it's usually the first Wednesday of every month, which the school system attends, uh, sometimes the board member attends, uh, and then we, we just, we talk about, uh, the project, the scheduling of the project, or any items that are, uh, need to be addressed. Uh, the last one with, that we had, the original contractor's, uh, construction schedule, uh, uh, indicated that the project would be completed in, uh, September of twenty twenty-three. You see, it's a little bit different from the required completion, but that's, you know, that's a year and a half, uh, away, but he had anticipated September of twenty twenty-three, uh, completing the project. In normal procedures on a brand-new school, it's gonna take the owner, uh, roughly between six to eight weeks of extension. So, just because the project gets completed at a certain time, it requires six to eight weeks additional for the school system to move equipment in, and purchase fixtures and equipment, uh, to organize everything, uh, bus routes, uh, time, uh, clocks. Uh, there's all thing, or a lot of things that need to be, uh, done. So, that would have put us, in the original schedule, it would have put us accepting the job and probably starting school in the new facility right after last December, and, uh, that was pretty much accepted. Well, during the process, the contractor just kept extending, 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 uh, the project. Uh, we asked him numerous times, why don't we instead of keep extending, why don't we start compressing a little bit, never happened. But at the last, uh, monthly meeting, the contractor indicated that he would be finished, uh, by June, uh, next month, at the end of June, uh, which I, I don't, I don't think can happen, uh, by the condition of the project out there, the number of things that have to be done. I'm more anticipating the project to be completed in August or September, which would yield another six to eight weeks on that. I'm anticipating that school, and I hope, probably by November of, uh, this year. Uh, we'd invited, uh, representatives, contractors to, uh, be here, and is anyone from the contractor? Here, okay. Would y'all, would y'all like to address the board, or? I have another page of my presentation, if y'all would like to, uh, to address the board, before it's done, if you don't, that's not, that's not, for me, it's not, yeah.
No, my hands still be here.
Oh, yeah.
Before I have the impression with Don Barren, you have the impression with Don and Baron contract. So, I understand what Rice has said, I'll give you a little history, uh, when the job was bid in February or January, we actually started in February, so we mobilized. Uh, we had an issue with the steel erector on the project, that he delayed seven months getting the project finished. At the time, we were dealing with it, we, uh, we looked for other erectors to come on site. We sent him multiple emails, ended up sending him certified letters, we couldn't get anyone else. At the time, pandemic coming out of COVID, that could get on the project. So, in the gist, there is delay in this project. We feel confident that we can be substantially complete at the end of July, or the end of June of this year, and like we said in the meeting last week, and get the scope board in. Get the scope.
And Mr. Brady, I talked to Mr. Uh, Gregory earlier this week, and asked him, um, I talked to Mr. Graves, too. Uh, Mr. Graves went out to the site yesterday, I'm thinking, and I'm not speaking on his behalf, we can speak for himself, but he said he's only, like, well, he's on the job site, he's just working. I asked Mr. Gregory, uh, this past week, uh, if the activity increased any as far as, uh, and awareness as far as completing the school, getting a little more labor out there, with more contractors out there to get the job done in a more quick and timely way. And Mr. Gregory, I'll bet to me, was, he hadn't seen any improvement in the works of that interview.
Well, so, Brady, I mean, I was out there today, been out there every day, before he even tangled me, there's fifty or sixty people on the site. I mean, that, uh, yesterday, he had a dozen people in the concession stand, Bill.
I was out there about an hour yesterday, the four, I was asleep in the car.
Okay.
And, uh, there were two on the roof, and I stood there for an hour, nobody ever got on that group of work.
Yeah.
And I drove around, walked around outside for a while, and I just, I didn't see their back there, they were back there, I was in my job.
Well, I've been out there every day, and.
And I've been, it's been something, I've had a bunch of work, I've been trying out this, and, and, I, I don't see no way you're gonna, that, that, that can be happening.
Well, I mean.
See, with hard shit, you're a big guy, I don't see that happening.
I understand. Let's, let's go out there this afternoon. Let's, like I said, I've, I've been out there this morning already.
What's gonna happen in case there's a delay?
We're gonna be through, we got to work Saturday and Sunday.
Have y'all worked any weekend?
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
So, Rice told me that he haven't, he hasn't seen any weekend activities out there. Is that what you've been seeing, Rice, or? You know, I get, I'm thinking from board member standpoint, and, uh, I appreciate the stuff that y'all do out there, okay? But it just had me to expectations that, that I had as a board member, you know, with an anticipated completion date of October of last year, possibly, depending on time, November, December, and, uh, now we're looking at possibly August, September, who knows? It's kind of in the air, and as Rice has said, Todd and I have been, uh, mostly out there with, with Steve, and we talked about timelines, we talked about our schedule, and I wish to get that school completed by the first of this year, from August, September. Yeah, my, 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 coordinating, 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 and it's just, but we don't pay, you're upset, and frustration, and a lot, a lot of people, and we can't move into that school. Uh, come on, at the start of the, because we got three schools, they're in a close proximity, we got to coordinate bus routes, traffic flow, uh, pass, and get communication done for them. And, uh, that's why I asked for Rice to come up to the table, see if he had any more ground, or, or. And I appreciate you saying, I got it completed by Tuesday, but I've heard that before, and so it's frustrating. And I stressed to y'all, I'm out there, and the way, let's get this thing taken care of, and, so like, every time I come out to another construction defense, well, it's gonna be another one, it's gonna be another one, so I'm really gonna get the bottom line on when it's gonna be completed, so we can start our game now, and get it on top of it.
Yeah, let's, uh, we've, we've done some scheduling, the three days of the project, the next is the last thing, you know, you know, GM finishes last, and we got four days, so those, I will be complete by the end of June, so I, I, I would walk the job, do Saturday, or tomorrow.
Well, Rice is our representative, Rice is a professional, he works for us, and, and, you know, he, he gives us information and updates great on that project. And I've given, contacted Rice on the project, and Rice, you know, he gonna tell me the same thing that you're saying.
Right.
And, uh, of course, he gonna have my permission to speak here, too, and, uh, you know, my good old board members don't wanna get that school completed in time for the fall, and so everybody, they wanna utilize that facility as they should now back to November of last year.
Right.
So, that's what's frustrating.
I understand.
All right, that's all I've got, Rice, would you like to come back with, and kind of give us, uh, your closing comments or some additional information?
We, uh, and I'm sure Mr. Manley recognizes the fact of the other monthly meetings. We started detecting this a year ago, uh, I have it back on my notes in my journals, just things like that. Every monthly meeting is started on with the construction schedule, where are we now, where are we going in the next month? Uh, there's, uh, numerous, numerous times that we've expressed, matter of fact, I look back. There's numerous, numerous times that we've expressed, matter of fact, I look back, I have six different written communications to the general contractor regarding times of completion of the project. Within times of completion of the project, y'all also have another document, a bunch of terms in the contract. Within the construction documents, which is the basis of the terms of the contract, within your instructions to bidders, whichever bidder that bid this job, matter of fact, if you remember, we bid this job twice. The first time it went so far out of the money, the school system had to go back before the public and request additional dollars to be to fund this project. And they overwhelmingly came back and supported eighty dollars to do it. So we hadn't bid it twice. But in the instructions to bidders, the completion time is very specific, you can say five hundred and forty days with a clause of two thousand dollar daily liquidated damages. Also, in the supplementary conditions of the construction documents under art of state time, quote, time is of the essence. Quote, the contractor agrees to commence work not later than fourteen days after the notice to proceed and to substantially complete the project within the time stated in the contract. Also, within the summary of work in the construction documents, completion time, contractors are furnished sufficient, sufficient forces, construction plan and equipment, and works of hours, including weekends and night shifts, as may be necessary to ensure completion of work in accordance with the construction schedule. Also, within the construction contract itself with the general contractor, the notice to proceed is specific of February the twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, duration of five hundred and forty days with a required completion of August the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and with liquidating damages. We've been collecting liquidating damages since October the fourth. We saw that they were going to be in jeopardy of extension of time. So for a couple of different months, we encouraged them to include liquidating damages within their scheduled base and budgeted within the job. Never did. So I just started, I removed some money out of the contractors' payments at that time. We originally pulled out three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And then here this last month, we asked for them to add another one hundred and eighty thousand dollars in this project. As your architect and architect of the construction documents, which define the terms of the contract, I suggest your consideration of placing the general contractor in default. Default, the meaning of default is the failure to fulfill obligations of contract. And I feel like that's in order in this project at the current time. And I'll answer any other questions that you may have at this time.
No, Rice, no, I have been in contact with our attorney, I've been in contact with our attorney. So all this, your recommendation has been discussed with our attorney, is that correct? Based on Rice's recommendation as architect of that project, I'll make the motion to the board. I'm looking at Washington Parish School Board to clarify with the general contractor, Donnie and Barry on the contract and foremen, to be in default to the contract concerning this town and middle school construction project, and to further authorize the superintendent, Mr. Todd Geis, to issue issue report of those related parenting. So I will make that motion before the board.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, any discussion? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none.
Thank you, Rice.
No, the only thing I want to say in closing is, I'm going to ask Rice and our attorney to work closely on that project together and keep us as a board of elder advice with what our next steps are. If we don't see any improvement in the construction time and this of that project, so we can take the next step legally whenever I choose over some of that contract.
So, sir. Moving on to item number four, consider, consider approval of statement of voluntary participation of those who are in East Town and country drainage improvement project, Mr. Oberon.
Mr. Hayes is here with Laszlo, and he has a... Mr. Hayes is here with Laszlo, and he has a presentation, I believe, to make regarding this particular drainage matter, drainage issue. It's something that you've been working with the police jury.
Yes, sir, I'm Josh Hayes with Laszlo and Associates. For Stephen, our, exhibit's available. There we go. So this is a drainage and flood control project. It's the Grand African, it's the Washington Parish Police Jury. This is near the Town and Country subdivision. And we plan on doing some levee realignments, some stormwater pump station construction. And with all that being said, there's a few right-of-way parcels that aren't needed to complete that project. And one of those is on the school board. On the next exhibit there, we have the, all in yellow there is a parcel that is a required drainage right-of-way. And the police jury requests a volunteer participation agreement, which Mr. Moa has. If we can get agreements to have that signed at that place.
As a point of clarity, just for reference, this is Old Star Road right here.
Yes, sir.
That's Old Star Road with a bridge right there, going into Town and Country.
Yes, sir.
This is Town and Country subdivision.
Yeah, our land, our land, there's no, and that will strip there, is that correct? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, just to speak more to the details on that participation agreement, but basically, what it says is that you're aware of the project, you're aware that it is the police jury getting this money for the drainage and flood control project, and that you are agreeable to selling a right-of-way to the police jury, but you're not actually selling it at this time, kind of the schedule of this thing. There's thirteen parcels out there that I need right-of-way on. And I go through and I meet with the property owners, I get them to agree to this participation. And then we submit that to the funding agency, along with plans and other details. This exhibit just shows the full property owned by the police jury. You've got some oxygen ponds there that are under a lease of Town and Country. But I just kind of show that so you can see the full parcel that the police jury has just owned. But we'll submit these forms that the landowners have signed with the plans, and the funding agency will review that. And once they approve all of that, then we'll come back to the personal owners for the actual donation or sale of the right-of-way. And I, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you all may have.
The document he's referring to, it's a Department of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management Agency document, it's got a statement of voluntary participation, as he said. Basically, this is been required by all landowners, correct?
Yes, sir.
And so that's why he's here today is to indicate that the school board is agreeable to going forward with this project, and it would just require the representative of the board, either Superintendent Geis or Mr. Cobble, to sign with my hand. And I will give the document with that, with Josh, Wickers, so God's to go over this. And so this is just a formal, it's allowed to reduce drainage improvements in that area.
This is just overall safety or flood health of Town and Country subdivision and...
That's correct. Oh, yes, sir. We will reduce flood risk, not only in Town and Country, but also property just north there. It's, it's a good project for that, that area, that community.
So our, our plan is to grant them the right to use extra land in whatever area they think to use and use to improve the drainage of Town and Country. At this time, we're not prepared to sever it, and we are, what's the request?
The request is to let them go forward with the application for the funding and restoration of this project.
Okay. And, and to utilize land, according to their right-of-way usage for drainage purposes.
Yes, sir. It would be a drainage right-of-way, and you would still retain ownership.
We could throw it all, we could just all that ownership, we can transfer over or something like that, but yeah. Just, just in fact, we've not had the phone.
Yes, sir.
I think you have, you have.
This is something that I need, it's, it's, we're kind of having this.
It's just going to require a motion to the board to approve the voluntary participation, that's what he's asking for today, so they can move forward with the project.
Yes, sir.
I also have a recommendation of granting a right-of-way usage.
We have a motion to consider approval of statement of voluntary participation, have a second?
Second.
Any other in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item five, consider, considerations selection of engineer for baseball and softball trims for Washington Parish High School, Mr. Bailey.
I'd like to make a motion that we do consider selecting engineer to go out for bid for the baseball and softball and to turf the fields of Washington Parish High School.
Are you going to recommend someone today, or?
Yeah, Simpson and G M, please.
Okay. Our motion. Consider it, have a second? Is it all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none, thank you. Item six, consideration selection architect for Good Hope additions and improvement, Mr. Bailey.
I'd like to make a motion that we do select an architect for Good Hope additions and improvements, please.
Have a second?
Second.
Ms. May? Yes.
Good name, the architect.
Oh, we want to T P A, please.
Have a second, Ms. May, do you want to make a statement?
I have a call, second. I'm sorry, okay. Yes, I have to recuse myself from this vote, just being cautious, because I have a relative that works with T P A Holdings. And so make sure that's included in the minutes. But with all that being said, we've used T P A for a number of years, and the quality of their work is beyond question.
We have a motion, have a second, I want to recuse on the, on this motion, please.
Ms. May?
So I can't vote, right?
No, you just say you abstain.
Do what now?
I'm just recusing, say I'm recusing.
Okay, I'm recusing myself.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Manley?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes. Motion carried, thank you, Mr. Bailey. Policy consideration approval, Ms. Nichols or Ms. Doctor Johnson? Round the picture of the baseball team?
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, board. The Policy Revision Committee met on Thursday, April twenty-fifth, to discuss the policies that you were given for consideration for review at the last board meeting to be voted on today. The committee reviewed the policies and recommendations by the Employee Dress Code Committee and the Student Dress Code Committee. Based on the Safety Director's recommendations, the third policy, policy K F A, requires spectators to have clear bags at all assemblies, large gatherings, and sporting events. So at this time, we are asking the board to approve these policies, G A M B, Employee Dress Code, J C D V, Student Dress Code, and K F A, Public Condom Home School Property.
Do we have a motion to approve these three items as presented? A motion, have a second? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none, thank you, Mr. Bailey.
I'm assuming we're going to be getting communication out on that clear baggage.
Yes, sir, we've already talked about it, got it planned, ready to go. We've got a good mission team, Mr. Bailey.
Just saying about a school board member phone call.
Moving on to number eight, consideration and approval to change the title of Assistant Technology Facilitator to Assistant Technology Coordinator and the job description that comes along with that. I think it just kind of clips up some of the language. Is that right, Dr. Ofer?
We would like for your consideration and approval to change the title of Assistant Technology Facilitator to Assistant Technology, excuse me, Assistant Technology Facilitator to Assistant Technology Coordinator and the job description that comes along with that. I think it just kind of clips up some of the language. Is that right, Dr. Ofer?
Board, it's just our continuing updates on our job description to keep them current. Unfortunately, Ms. Carolyn Bass, who's held this job for many, many years, passed away recently. So we will be going forward to fill this position, this is just updating and keeping that job description current.
Have a motion to make this change, have a second?
Second.
All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none, thank you.
Thank you, board. Moving on to number eight, I'd also ask for your consideration and approval to add a professionalism, performance, and competency component or section to all previously board-approved job descriptions for our certified employees. And as Ms. May said a minute ago, that's just in an effort to keep our language and verbiage up to date and consistent. Mr. Geis, is there anything we need to add to that?
Numbers, Thompson, again, that's just another, our way of keeping our job descriptions current. I think if you read these professional compasses that we're bringing for you today, I don't think there's anyone that's going to agree that our teachers are not already doing that. But we do want to have that in writing to move forward with our job descriptions, so.
We have a motion to add professionalism and competency aspects to the current job description, have a second?
Yes, sir, second.
A motion, have a second, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
There's none, thank you.
Thank you, board.
Item ten, financial report, Ms. Nichols.
Good afternoon, board. You have in your packets the financial report for the period ending March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. If we look at the first page, first column, we see the general fund budget is ending this period with forty-five point six million in fund balance. This is about a hundred and thirteen percent of where we were this time last year. So you'll see very little change from what we have in our adopted budget. The second column, we have District One M and O. We're ending this period with twenty-eight point six million. You'll see that that's ninety-seven percent of what we had this time last year in our fund balance. And that is anticipated, that is planned, that we start spending now, now that we're through the pandemic phase, or the years that, that we've been really restricting those expenditures for the unknown, that we're we're able to start spending them again, maintaining our schools, getting briefs done, we're back to purchasing buses now that we have vehicles available to purchase that we didn't have for the past three years. So you'll see that fund balance, not only this year, come down in M and O, but also for the next couple of years, that we'll be spending that fund balance down to where it had, from where it had grown to during the pandemic and during the lockdown time, where we didn't really, why we didn't have items to purchase and to just being proactive and cautious and not knowing what our sales tax revenues were going to be. If you'll look on the very last page, next to the last page, with the general fund and M and O, we have the three years comparison. And you'll see from last month in the first, first block on the, on the second to last page, our general fund revenues were a little over where we were this time last year. And there were a couple of items that came from the state this year, such as the stipend and the differentiated pay that have added to our fund balance and to our revenue a little bit. And we're in the process of, of being able to create a plan to spend that differentiated pay, and that's being put in place as we speak. The stipend pay, of course, as you know, the second distribution went out in the month of March. So that, so this financial statement indicates those have been distributed out. And then we talked last month, that was building up our fund balance a little bit, but in anticipation of it being paid out in the month of March. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. We do have, coming up over the next couple of months, we will be revising our budget. That finance committee has been moved... we will be revising our budget, uh, that finance committee has been moved to June. I had a conflict and apologize, but I'm gonna actually be out of the office the week that was originally planned, uh, so we moved that to June twenty-first, I believe. Well, okay, I had a bad question. I was going by memory and didn't actually pull up my calendar. Um, and then we will be distributing the sales tax supplement. We have estimated the date of June seventeenth. Of course, that's only if we can get that out soon, or we will absolutely get it out as soon as it's available.
Any questions, comments? While I got you here, have we heard, have it in progress on representative Morris's funds that had been presented to West Washington, West Washington?
I actually sent an email on that earlier today, and my contact is out of the office today. So I anticipate to hear back from him tomorrow. Uh, I know the last time we talked, that there was a mention of an extension on that. Once we got approved, that they would, uh, they don't plan to pull that up from under us.
It was my concern.
But as soon as I have it in writing, I will feel better.
Right, thank you. Thank you for the board. Mr. Hambill? Let's see, that's Jared Peters, I'm sorry. Consider approval of change order bid number thirty-two-three, security access points, Highland Elementary School. Jared Peters.
Good afternoon, board members, um, we have a, consider to approval of a change order to bid number thirty-two-three, security access points over Highland Elementary. Um, we're contracting with Reagan Builders to renovate the existing canopy at the west end of the school building. Um, it's going to include a new chain link fence with two gates to provide extra security for those students, when they have car drop off and pickup. The change order cost is sixty-one thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-nine cents.
West Falls, South. West Falls.
Westside, South. Have a motion to approve this change order for Highland Elementary?
A motion.
Have a motion, second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none, thank you, Jared. Item twelve, construction renovation reports, Mr. Hambill.
Good evening, board, you had to find in your handout, uh, for the Ross Breacher, you had all your updates that we heard from starting to middle school, so I did not include that in my handout today. Uh, but with T P A, uh, first of all, we need the rain to go later. Uh, we get, we, we two or three days sunshine and it rains one day, and it puts it, puts it back a couple of days. And you just have to continue raining that every, every week. But we started the elementary, that got jobs going very well. Uh, we worked there, uh, they were putting roof panels on the four classroom. They got off the ground, new parking lot, the grass area, got off that put-in. Um, West Washington, uh, track plant has been removed and all. Uh, Slade Field has been put back. Foundation and underslam has been, uh, done down with plumbing. And there's more manipulation around the softball field. Uh, a lot of, a lot of new parts up here at West Washington. Uh, security upgrade, you get that with the change order. Uh, the generator for, uh, uh, child nutrition has been installed, that job's completed. Drew entry river is completed. Uh, uh, pavilions for twenty-two schools that are working with, uh, sports upper, sports lower. Lake Shore Jack Jane cracked down, and that's just another project that they get started on, and it rains, and it just puts them back, uh, further, so that's ongoing process, uh, starting high school. Uh, that project's going well, uh, inside the field house. Uh, I mean, they got lots going up, all their jobs looking good. Baseball field house, slab four, yeah, uh, okay, the dirt. Okay, that's it. Good morning, board, I thought the topic was moving forward, the weekend we met up there. Um, we got new Todd starting with level, uh, new library. Soon as goes out, and we got those proceeding on five thirteen, we're trying to work it some day or week. Get started on early, uh, drill elementary, uh, rest for an elevation. Uh, soon as goes out, County Elementary, Empire, as soon as it goes out, they will get started and those, those jobs. Uh, land three, men later architect, the European construction, page, that are operating, yeah. We have made forty-third discussion, just both the water have been completed. Uh, we will discuss when that job can be completed, and our next meeting, I was out there last week. Uh, they were looking for my dad, they're, they're, it's going to, uh, they're just paying, they have late for the farm horse to do, so it's takes them to the system. Uh, the front's completed, other than putting metal on the holdings, uh, they didn't get that date, went back down, I was gonna be there, uh, just keep pushing back, but, um, that's where we have to start, uh, Richwood High School, uh, Richwood Middle. The medical frame coming in on Friday, May the third. Uh, I was out there talking to people, I was surprised of what had taken place. The whole frame happened, eight percent complete, put together. Um, and then we have massive assumptions behind our parking lots, uh, for the summer, I have established tree woodland. I think we'll be discussing, uh, vague questions on these, uh, to care with these parking lots. Uh, we're looking to start good times with your, uh, freedom, and with soon, soon as it goes out. That's all I have today, if you have any questions. Steve, I was starting out, and that's how I was out there talking to him in January. He felt, he thought we'll be able to complete that entire job by the end of July. Because I can still, because I still have that, to complete parking lots and hamboings, and have a nice weekend by the end of July. He, he said that he would have that big, very important stuff, so, uh, that was his word, okay.
If it quit framing, I said if it quits framing, huh?
If it quits framing.
You have a question for Steve? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, board.
All right, evaluation of bids, Mr. Peters.
Hey, board members, for, um, for bid number forty-five, twenty-four, and forty-seven, twenty-four, that's the Woodlawn Elementary, Woodlawn Middle, parking lots, uh, the Lake Shore Elementary parking lot. Um, I'm requesting the board's permission to accept the lowest responsive bidder on May twenty-first, which is going to be the date of those two bid openings. Both those bids were scheduled to be, um, open before today's meeting, but had a delayed due to advertising. So, um, we're asking for, uh, the board to, uh, grant permission to accept the lowest responsive bidder on May twenty-first.
A motion, Greg?
I make a motion. Second?
All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none, thank you, Jared.
All right, for bid, uh, forty-eight dash twenty-four, um, that's the bid for our scoreboard project for Richwood High School's basketball scoreboard, and Strayton Middle's football scoreboard. Um, I recommend that, uh, the board approve the lowest responsive bidder, Rainy Electronics, for those, uh, projects, the bid was forty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-five, uh, dollars. Now, for the Richmond Middle School, Richwood High School basketball.
I'm sorry, second?
Have a motion, and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes, any opposition? There is none.
All right, for a bid forty-nine dash twenty-four, that's Drew Karolyi and Robinson parking lots. Um, I will recommend that Washington Parish School Board approve the lowest responsive bidder in a disconstruction, uh, for those parking lots. Uh, they bid seven hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars.
That's a move that we have found out.
Second motion, and a second, all in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? Excuse me, go ahead, Mr. McCoy.
Yes, thank you. I was, I was asking for Robinson parking lot, for us to, uh, delay that for right now. Um, I have some concerns about, uh, Robinson's parking lot.
Are you wanting to delay the project or delay accepting the bid?
Sir?
Delay the project or accept the bid?
Well, I talked to Mr. Geist about it, and talked to Stephen about it, and we've been discussing some, uh, some other stuff, uh, about the future, and, uh, just like to wait before we commit that amount of money to that parking lot until we have a, a fair understanding about what we're going to do.
Okay.
I, I do believe we would have to reject the whole bid at this point. Is that correct, Yomer?
Yes. Is all three, um, projects tied together, left one bid?
Yes, sir.
All the three?
All three went out together and won one bid.
I didn't know that they were, they were all tied together.
So, we're gonna let it stand as is?
They didn't break an amount out for a project in the bid, did they?
Right, we did have that broken out.
Young kids have the amount.
It's bid as a unit price contract. All three of the schools are very similar in construction, so the same type of structures going on in each one. So we have here, I don't know, like the asphalt and the baseboards and the drains, lots of things that may, maybe other plenty of them.
Summertime.
Summer.
Well, I, I just like I said, I have some major concerns about, uh, Robinson Project, not Drew and Karolyi. Uh, and that, uh, this, you know, how would it not be in the favor of, uh, accepting, and, uh, especially the Robinson project.
Okay.
All right, we already have a motion, and a second.
Um, I don't want to discuss it now, but I'd like to tell the board what his reasons are later. It, it, much what you hear though, reason, I believe, I agree with it, it's gonna save a lot of money. Uh, I don't want to bring it right now, but later on, I'll get y'all, take y'all, if this is, but I will do this right now.
I think, I, I think we have a couple of options. We can table it and talk to the contractor. I don't think we can assume that, that the contractor would just agree to a change order because we bundled it together to get a better price on, on all three. So we did a cost projection to see, um, how much each one would be charged to that school, because there are different funding sources. But if we were to go to a con, the contractor, it might not look the same because we did bundle it together to get a, a better price. But given that we can't speak for the contractor and say that he would be willing to take those out as a change order, we can table it, or we can approve it. Um, if we approve it, we can go ask him, but at, at that point, we're kind of at, at his mercy.
Can we approve this now for timely, this now going, and then have a change order to leak, awesome, at the next board meeting?
If the contract is applicable to it.
It's gonna change the other two bids, probably likely, right?
Mm-hmm.
Will it change the other two bids for possibly?
I would, then, then, what I would.
If it's within the budget, can they reject the bids? I don't, I don't, I'm not clear on that.
No, no, sir. That, that's why I would say table it. We can't reject it if it's within the, the budget and we requested the bid.
Would you?
Don't we have the right to reject a bid? We have the right to, uh, reject a bid. No, we can reject, uh, we can reject the bid.
Would you undertake a motion to table?
The only other option, I think, would be to have a special meeting, I'd suggest, sir, uh, um, delaying the opening, so, that's just an option.
Sorry, I'm rushing, I'm, I'm, I'm rushing, I'm trying.
Yes.